It's Linda, I would like to make a procedural motion to dispense with the requirement for the bylaws that the majority of members be present physically for the meeting.
Yes, I think we did that last time.
We did.
Do you know, does that carry over or do we have to do it again?
No, based I believe on how we did it last time, we would need to do it again. Potentially doing something that so you wouldn't have to do it every time.
You know, it's a simple motion. I mean, I don't think it hurts to do it every time just to have it reflected in the record unless we amend the bylaws.
But anyway, I'm. Ms. House is making the motion. We have a second for Ms. House.
Second.
And who's that?
Who is that?
Sneak.
Who seconded it?
Sneak.
Who would second that motion?
Sneak.
Mr. Haas?
No, it was my boss.
Mr. Urban?
No, boss.
No, it was Mr. Sneak.
Okay, thank you.
But you'll have to identify yourself because I can't see who's making the motions.
Okay, so I have a motion, Ms. House, second for Mr. Sneak to suspend the bylaws in reference to physical appearance at the meetings. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, motion carried. We also have another motion that Ms. Crocker has sent to me and Mr. Dilluka. The motion is to suspend the bylaws regarding conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the manager's emergency declaration. So we need a motion to that effect. Who would like to make that motion?
McDermott.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Perry.
Mr. Perry, on the question?
I'm not quite sure what that means, Mr. McGinley. It's Linda.
It means that the public comment, the way we're doing it now, doesn't comply with the way the bylaws written.
Okay.
We are complying with the sunshine laws best we can based on the information that Ms. Crocker sent out this week. But, you know, physically present, they only have three minutes. All those things that we have in the bylaws are not available at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. McDermott, second by Mr. Perry. He had a question on the motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Moving down to additions and deletions from the agenda. Mr. Griffith, do you want to make a recommendation?
Well, the recommendation is that the ordinance for the penalty fee be added to the agenda.
Okay. Any issues with that from anyone? Mr. Griffith sent that out to you, so you had a copy of that. It's been reviewed, so it should be fine to go. If there's no problem with that, we'll add it to number six on the agenda items. Motion to introduce the ordinance allowing for reductions of penalty period fees for 2020 Luzerne County real estate taxes. Correct, Mr. Griffith?
Yeah, that's correct. I want to take a, have a deletion as well.
Have what?
I want to delete something from the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to delete number five from the agenda if I could please. We have not received the contract for Well Path yet, so I don't, I don't feel comfortable with having that resolution on here yet.
Okay.
If, if I may.
To do something in that regard because we have a situation, obviously, at the prison, everybody's fully aware of that. Because we have one provider that's in place that has opted to get out of their contract. And it takes approximately four months transition from what I'm being told. So we need to have something in place because I think we have a temporary situation until July 1. So can we keep that on the agenda? And if we, if we get to number five and everyone.
What I'd like, if Ramil just.
We will do that.
I know Ramil has sent out the previous contract from 2015 for us to look at.
That's correct.
But, but I'm wondering what the, what the cost is to the county before we, I mean, if we approve a contract and that number's like $4 million for the year, that's not fair to members of council to vote on that.
Well, I think on the agenda submitted, I think that the number, there's, it's $97,000 more in this year. But, you know, we get there, we can have that discussion, and we can postpone at that point in time or table, whatever people would like to do, if that's all right.
Okay, that's fair enough. I'll, I'll drop off my deletion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, then we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Kendra, very good. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, motion carried. All right, we're going now to public comment. Q and A for people on the teams. I'm going to read these in case somebody doesn't have access. We have a, first one here is from, actually, Michelle is anonymous that comes up. Do you have a list of inmates set for release? What are the procedure in place to let crime victims know of early release? Additionally, what will happen with the stimulus checks that may come to inmates while incarcerated? Will they be allowed to use money or will it go towards the fines and restitution? And immediately below it says, and this is from Michelle also, I asked my question via email provided and wasn't happy with the response and want to bring it, bring it to the council's attention. I think some of those questions probably have to be answered by Mr. Rakovic or the solicitor's office. As I know, I don't know the answers, but can everybody see those?
Is it possible that Dave could answer any of that?
Well, if Mr. Rakovic is on, he might be a little bit more familiar, but Dave's on. You have any comment about that, Dave? Manager Pedri?
Yes, how are you?
We're good. Did you have any comment about the request from Michelle regards to the prisoners? Did you see that in your Q and A?
The stimulus checks?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley? I'll touch base with probation. They will have the, they'll have the information on that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll let probation will look out for it.
All right, would you get that reply out to everybody then? Manager Pedri?
I'm with you. I'm sorry, my speakers aren't great.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley, I believe I could answer much of that if you would like.
Mr. Rakovic, what did you say? I'm sorry.
I said I believe I can answer much of that.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, if the stimulus check were to be brought to the prison and deposited into the inmate's account, we would automatically take 20% towards their court cost restitution, fines, and everything else. So they would be able to pay off their fines, costs, and restitution out of those stimulus checks.
Okay, but that the check isn't delivered to you, they have to, it has to be brought to your prison.
It would be, it would be mailed to the prison.
Okay.
We would process it like we do any other check that we receive from a government entity. We would wait until it clears, and then 20% of that check would go towards their fines and costs.
Okay.
And restitution.
What if, what if the check is direct deposited, Mark?
Nothing we could do about that.
So if it's mailed, you can confiscate it and take your 20%?
I won't say confiscate it. I mean, we would deposit it towards the inmate in their
Fines and costs. Okay, but if it's.
As long as, as long as the prison, sorry.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
As long as the prison is aware that there's restitution, fines or costs, that's what we, that's our procedure.
Okay, all right.
And just. And via court order. I, I will defer to Mark, but if victims were on the SAVN notice to be informed of a prisoner's release, that that is in place.
That is correct, Ramil. Though we have not disabled SAVN or victim notification line, everyone are still going out. And we haven't needed to use the emergency override procedure at this point, which would be if the networks go down. We haven't had to use it in the last three or four weeks.
Mark?
Yes.
What about domestic relations if they owe child support? Is that taken out immediately too?
When they have domestic relations. Yes, not, not all of it, because the individuals that are on work release, that's a little bit different when they're actually paying to be on the work release program. It's not automatically 20%, but that is going to be the goal within the next probably six months.
Okay.
The other part of her question, Mr. McGinley, was are they going to release, put a list out of those folks that are going to be released?
Well, I think everything, as Ramil indicated, everything came through petitions from the public defender's office, conflict counsel, am I correct?
Correct. And the orders are public record and can be accessed through the clerk of courts.
So the, so the answer, the short answer is we're not going to publish a list in a newspaper of any sort, right?
We have no legal responsibility to do that. There are.
People have done that in the past, haven't we?
No, there are.
Yeah, well, I think, I think just to be clear, I think that was what her question is. They're looking to see if there was a list of inmates set for release.
But she can check it through the clerk of courts.
Just like every day, we release up to 40 inmates. We don't publish that. I mean, we know who we released, obviously, but if they were a victim of the crime, they would have, and registered through SAVN, they would have received a phone call, a text, or an email, letting them know that that individual has been released from jail.
That's a perfect explanation. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that.
For council people, you got an email from Mr. Revo at 12:52 a.m. this morning on your council email. And there's two items, item five and item six, and we'll bring up item five when we get to that. But item six, he's in support of Mr. Griffith's ordinance that was added to the agenda. So that's Mr. Revo's situation. Also, I see a comment here, I think that's Brian Snyder from Shiner. Does the proposed Well Path contract contain a termination clause for the solicitor's office?
Well, we haven't re, we have not been able to review the actual contract, but it will. The, the Wexford termination clause was 120 days notice. We may extend that since it really is a short turnaround to change healthcare providers at the prison. But we will have an extended notice requirement. We'll also have other safeguards as to termination with the Well Path contract.
Okay, everybody, you hear that? We're fine. Very good. And that's the comments that I have at this point. Moving down to agenda item number one, approve the minutes from the March 10th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Walter Griffith moved.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne McDermott.
Leanne?
Yes.
A motion, a second from, motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Leanne. Any questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition?
No, Urban.
Mr. Urban, in opposition, any extensions? None heard, motion carries. The next seven minutes are from the special meeting that we had on the 19th. Do we have a motion for approval of those minutes?
Sheila, so moved.
Ms. Segman, do we have a second?
Kendra, second.
Kendra, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, motion carries. Moving down to item number three. This is the item that we had in our last work session back on March the 10th. It's for the grant for the boat launch. Do we have a motion for the resolution? Anyone want to make a motion?
Present it.
Mr. Sneak, do we have a second?
Second, Vog.
Matt, Vog, on the question?
On the question, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Yes.
I just want to know that if we pass a resolution tonight or this afternoon regarding this, that does not authorize the boat launch or anything. It just authorizes the manager to look to see if we can get the grant money based on the fact that we're going to match the grant. And if we don't match the grant, we don't get the, we don't get the boat launch, correct?
I, I think that's what was stated when we had the work session. Mr. Pedri, is there anything different?
Yes, that's correct. This is just authorizing the county to apply for the grant. Should we receive the grant, I'll come back to county council to see if we have that match, either in Act 13 funds or other funds. We were in contact with the state after the last meeting. They asked, we asked them if we can utilize other state funds as the match, and the answer is yes. So we will actually be putting in for a second grant for this, for a DCED grant. That way, we can have half it from DCNR and half of it from DCED. And if we are successful in the whole thing, then it's a fully state-funded piece. We don't have to dip into the Act 13 money. But I understand that this is not being authorized for the Act 13 at this point. If we do get this grant, I'll come back to county council, let you guys know how we're going to pay for it, if we're going to pay for it. And if we don't have the funding for it, I'll tell the state we don't have the funding for it.
Hey.
Harry Haas, Mr. McGinley.
Fine with that? Mr. Griffith, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with this response. I think Harry has a question.
Mr. Haas, do you have a question?
I do. Yeah, thanks for recognizing me. Yeah, good question, Walter. I really appreciate that. And I'm all about economic development and helping out any way we can to pro tourism and enjoying our waterfront. I just want to make sure that we're not doing something that hasn't worked in the past. At the last meeting, I suggested that you should maybe contact Dr. Risinger. Remember, he approached council a few years ago, and we had the very discussion that they used a row crew right there on the Susquehanna. The launch was, I think, really close to where the designated area is. And I think if we could really see what's been done in the past, I know I'm a little putting the cart before the horse here because we haven't had the authorization to get the grant yet. However, I encourage the manager, if you could take a look at some of those other stakeholders. I would also suggest Susky Bass Masters because they utilize the launch on the, on the Mesbit side, on the west side. And also maybe the universities and put out there for private enterprise to do such a thing. We want to make sure the project's viable. And even though it's grant money, it's still taxpayer money that we're, we're still spending at the state level too. So I just hope we're good stewards with that. So really just a comment, not looking for any answers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we need a roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Anonymous.
Anonymous, thank you. Moving on to number four. This is as a result of our last work session also on March 10th. Mr. Eddie was with us that evening, and we talked to him in this regard. There were no issues as far as, you know, when coming to the hearing and offering opposition. But the motion introduced the ordinance amending the Luzerne County zoning map to rezone three parcels of property totaling 2.83 acres in Ross Township from mixed zoning districts of B3, S1, and A1 zones, Highway Business District, B3 Zone. Do we have a motion?
Walter Griffith, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Radel?
Mr. Sneak or was Ms. Radel?
Give it to Ms. Radel.
Okay, Ms. Radel, thank you. On the question?
Very nice. We need a roll call, Ms. Lawrence. On the question, sir, Haas.
Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
I, I just want to clarify, just to make sure that the township supervisors out there in Ross, they gave their approval?
Yep, everything is, was approved. There was no issues, Harry. But this is just the introduction of the ordinance, and hopefully, when we get to the final vote, you know, we can make sure that everything's still in place. And we'll ask Mr. Eddie to give us some kind of memo to support that.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody else good? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas? Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, thank you. Moving down to number five, and this is the one we talked about a little earlier this afternoon. Motion adopt a resolution authorizing county manager to execute a contract with Well Path LLC for inmate healthcare services. We need a motion and a second, and then we can go to the question. Do we have a motion?
Don't move, McDermott.
Very good. Ms. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second, Perry.
Okay, Mr. Haas? On the question, Mr. Rakovic?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to respond to some of the questions that came up earlier? Were you on when Mr. Griffith asked about the contract?
I was.
Okay.
And I do understand the questions. We had entered into, looking at an RFP, we had issued an RFP back in 2018. Long process we had gone through. We had interviewed three companies personally at that point in time. Four had applied, but the one really we didn't feel was an appropriate candidate to interview. At the time, we had selected Wexford Health as our provider. We thought that they were going to be the best candidate for the position. Their price for the first year was $2,829,353. They were lower than Well Path's price at the time, but we also thought that they were going to be a better provider. We did enter into a contract with them in February, February 25th, I believe it was. We received a letter from them informing us that they would, wanted to get out of their contract, and they were executing the 120-day clause to do so. And further said that effective June 23rd, they would be gone as our provider. At that point in time, we issued, reissued the RFP that we had previous. At that point in time, we issued, uh, reissued the RFP that we had previously done, uh, with information that if they were going to abide by, uh, the offer or proposal that they had made, they simply needed to provide us with that information. Uh, we did receive one from, uh, WellPath and one from Corrections, uh, the, actually, the one, uh, and CBH. They were the three that, that had, uh, responded to the, the request. At this point in time, we're in a difficult position. Um, we have a provider that's leaving in the middle of a pandemic, um, and we're looking to, uh, get the next best company that we think we have, uh, available. The other issue that we have to look at is the fact that this company that, um, I've proposed has a five-year history with us. They've worked in our operation, and to be able to turn around and be able to provide services to the inmates, uh, I, I believe this is the only company that will be able to do it in the timeframe that was set forth by Wexford. As far as the money concerns, uh, I broke a lot of that down. The amount of, in excess of the proposed contract is $97,377 versus what we had. The original, uh, amount was $166,927 for the year. So I've actually, um, put the money into per month what it is. We will be able to recoup, uh, a great majority of that money where it's not gonna be an additional burden to the taxpayer, um, for the remainder of the year. A lot of that is gonna be recouped basically on lack of service. When I issued the RF, when the county issued the RFP, we had penalties in there if they didn't have staff available, and it wasn't per hour. We said if you don't have a staff member there, it's time and a half per their salary that you're gonna owe money back to the county. So at this point, um, we are currently paying the provider the contract price divided by 12, less any average daily populations. I'm assuming that, that if everything remains as it is, um, there might be a $20,000 higher cost to this contract than there was to the previous one, which we may be able, which I believe we'll be able to, uh, possibly transfer out of some other funds that we have in the facility.
Mr. Rakovich? The previous provider that we had difficulties with, uh, you know, when we had several people, uh, with the suicide situations?
Correct.
Are they the same provider?
I will, I will, um, break that down a little bit better.
Okay.
The provider at the time, their name was Correct Care Solutions.
Yes.
Um, they were the ones where we had the suicides under. Uh, shortly after that, that company was basically bought up or incorporated into WellPath. Now, my thought, being a skeptic, was, well, they're just looking to change their name so they're not associated with them. But they also changed a lot of their upper management in the company. Um, and we noticed that kind of extremely quickly. They brought in different people for the psychology department. They brought in, uh, different doctors that they had been dealing with. So it, it, I guess technically it's not the same company, um, but they did change the way that they were practicing in the prison. And, and we did notice that it was better.
Yeah. Did you have any issues with them after they made that change?
From the time they made that change, we did not have any issues.
Okay. Other questions?
Mark, Mark, it's, Mark, but Sheila. Um, what was the rationale for Wexford not being able to complete the contract, or what was, was, was the reasoning?
Well, I mean, they, they just said that we were too difficult to work with. Um, I mean, that was their letter, but the honesty, I would say we were holding them responsible, saying you need to have these people here. You, you are supposed to have a physician's assistant 40 hours a week. Eight hours a week isn't, isn't cutting it. So we were, we were demanding on what was required in the contract. And they thought we would just let them, you know, slide through. Um, from day one, I'll be honest, it was a very sloppy startup. They didn't have the, the staff, I believe, on site that they needed to, um, to start rolling out, you know, being our medical and mental health provider. And we let them know it. We, we, we were unhappy with the, the way they were performing in here.
Other questions?
Uh, yes, it's Walter.
This is Leanne.
Go ahead, Leanne, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Uh, hi, Mark, this is Leanne.
Yes.
I'm just, I just wanted to know if you could maybe break down a little bit of what kind of money we could get back. I know you did mention penalties. Um, do you have approximate money or dollar figure for that? And also with, um, April, if, if they do happen to end at the end of April, if you were gonna hold back that payment, do you have, um, the total monthly payment that we would be holding back from them? If you could just maybe give us a couple dollar figures?
Actually, Mark, Mark, this is Vito. Uh, maybe we should, uh, we can't forget we're at a, this is a public meeting. If we could have discussions regarding that aspect of the numbers, uh, either in an executive session at some point, or if you could give a report, uh, to council. Um, we could end up putting ourselves in a precarious legal position if, if we're discussing potential litigation or, um...
I think I could answer a good deal of that, Vito, without talking about anything, um, that could lead to litigation, because it's actually in the contract, a lot of it.
Okay.
Um, and I, I think I know where the line is. Uh, right now, the way the contract is bid is that, um, we assume that we're gonna have an average daily population of 650 inmates. Every time our average monthly population is below 650, uh, we receive a credit of $4.09 per day per inmate. Right now, uh, I, I understand, you know, we're in a different, uh, situation, but our total, uh, average daily population for last month is 624. So you would take, you know, the, the 26 inmates times the $4.09 times the 31 days, which would, would give you, um, it's about $8,000. So that would be part of the savings. Um, in our contract, like I said, when a company isn't, uh, filling the positions, they have a penalty of one and a half times that individual's salary, um, per every hour that they aren't there. So that, that is how we would, um, make up some of the difference on the cost of it. Is that okay, Vito? I didn't cross any lines?
It's in, in the contract, it's pu- public information, correct? Vito? Yes?
I'm sorry, what, uh, the contract terms of, yes, uh, of course.
Okay. Walter, you have a question?
Yes. So do you have a contract for them right now, uh, Mark?
Um, a current contract? Well, something was emailed to me about 15 minutes before. The previous one that we had, Ramilda had sent to everyone
Right.
was with Correct Care Solutions. Uh, and then we also have the one that we have with WellPath. We would require that it was, I can't, I guess I can't say identical, but all of those terms would be required where, um, you know, the penalty fee, the average daily population rebate, um, you know, the terms and conditions. We would want it to be identical to what we had with Wexford. Now, WellPath has additional services, which additional hours of service. I won't say additional services. They have additional hours of service, which is why I believe that their contract, um, is a little bit higher. And I do think there are necessary services for the county at this point, especially what we've, uh, seen in January, February, and March.
So are we mirroring the Wexford contract or the WellPath contract?
Wexford.
Wexford. So in the Wexford contract, it also has a termination and convenience in it?
Correct. I, I'm not sure if that's a county request, but we can, we can change that, obviously, at this point in time, seeing how we were.
I will, I will, I will say that I'm, I'm not really comfortable with that terminology. Uh, obviously, as you can see the bind that we're into now, um, we, we certainly don't have a leg to stand on now to go back after Wexford for cutting us short a- as their contract is only two months in. And now they're, now they're run, you know, now they're running and we're stuck, you know, absorbing the cost. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of that whole thing if we can't get a contract that actually shows that kind of language being taken out. Uh, what, what is the contract price? And I know we're under the gun here, because we have to have healthcare, but I, I don't like the gun-to-your-head mentality that we're getting stuck with, and I, I know you don't like it either.
No.
But unfortunately, we're, we're, we are where we are. Um, I don't know how we could alleviate it to maybe get them to give us a six-month contract. Uh, WellPath was the contractor that was responsible for the last lawsuit that we just settled, if I remember correctly. WellPath was the vendor for that, uh, at the prison, at the Corrections, right? That was WellPath.
If I may, it was Correct Care Solutions, which, uh, was their predecessor. So, yes. Uh, uh, we can, uh, we can, uh, negotiate some termination language. Uh, part of that was, uh, uh, and maybe it should have been a little bit, uh, more specific, was really to protect us if we did not feel that, uh, Wexford was, uh, actually, uh, delivering, um, on their services. Uh, and we are still looking into whether or not we can make a claim against, uh, Wexford. We have not, uh, made a final determination on that.
Well, even, even the termination language that was in the, uh, corrective, the original agreement in 2015 with Correct Care, that termination language was pretty dicey too. That doesn't protect the county at all. In fact, it said, it said in that termination contract, if in fact they decide to cut and run, we're stuck paying them. But on the county side, and that's in section, uh, 91 of the old contract in 15. So the termination contract certainly needs to be, uh, looked at, but, uh, I, I mean, I, I, I can't support a contract that I haven't seen. I mean, I certainly understand where we're at right now, but, uh, how much is the, how much is the annual cost?
Okay.
Right now?
Right?
Well, um, year one of WellPath is $2,996,280.
Right?
Year two is $3,86,160.
Okay.
And year three is $3,178,752.
And they're bumping that up by $97,000, right?
Um, over what, what Wexford's was.
Exactly.
In year one, yes.
So this new contract that we're gonna sign, we're gonna agree to today, without a contract in front of us to see, shows that it's a $97,000 increase over Wexford contract, and we don't know what the termination clause is. We don't know any language that's in there that says how much we're gonna get back as a bonus if in fact all this stuff comes to pass that you're talking about. We have nothing like that in writing yet, correct?
Ramilda.
Vito and, um...
Nothing that, nothing, nothing in writing that was reviewed, uh, by the Office of Law. It did not go through the contract review, uh, procedure. Um, I just want to note, uh, so we don't lose sight, uh, of, uh, all the work that was done, uh, before the, uh, RFP was posted, uh, regarding, uh, different protocols, not only for the mental health, uh, aspect, meaning the suicides, but also the medical, uh, uh, delivery, uh, of the, whoever the medical provider, uh, is. Uh, we really strengthened, uh, the requirements, uh, and, uh, WellPath, uh, is aware of that, uh, that these protocols, they're very intense, uh, protocols that need to be followed, and, uh, their contract is responsive to that.
And, and I, I certainly can appreciate all the hard work, and I, I know that we, you know, we got notified not even a month or so ago that, uh, Wexford was, uh, walking away from their contract, and it puts, I know, put Mark in a bad spot, and it also puts council in a bad spot, and it puts the, the whole county in a bad spot. But in regard to that, I'm, I'm not, I, I mean, I'm not opposed to, uh, approving a contract with a vendor if I can actually see the contract and, and decide that it's in the best interest of the county, but I'm certainly not gonna do it on a promise, a verbal promise for sure, uh, from a company who has a history. Quite honestly, WellPath, whether they are, are a new company or not, they have a history with this county of not being very forthcoming in, in a lot of situations where we've ended up in lawsuits and ended up paying. And WellPath is in fact the same company as Correction, Correction Care. Just because they changed the name doesn't, to me, doesn't change the company. So, uh, you know, and I know it's a tough spot because you have, you have to have a vendor, but, uh, I would like, if we could, you know, I would really rather have us wait until we have an actual contract. If it takes two days for you to get that together, we can call in a, a meeting again, that's fine, but I won't support something I can't see.
Harry Haas?
Yes, Harry, go ahead.
Hey, kind of piggyback on what Walter's talking about. I think maybe to help him in his decision-making process, maybe all of us too. Uh, uh, maybe Mr. Rakovich knows, what's the industry standard for, for a contract like this for, for backing out? And I think, I mean, we can put anything we want to in a contract, but at the same time, I, I think seeing what other people do would, would be helpful. And the, the follow-up question to that is too, how, how, how much wiggle room do we really have? Because we want to make sure we, we equip Mr. Rakovich, and we have the good transition. Like we said, the last one was a little sloppy. Well, we, we wanna, we wanna help, and we certainly want what's best for our, for our, our staff and inmates we're in, in charge of as well. So, two questions.
Okay, the, the second quest, part of that question I'm gonna answer first. Um, council voted on putting, uh, Wexford in as our medical provider in November. That was supposed to take place in, uh, on January 1st. Uh, it was, it was very sloppy. It was very rushed just because of the amount of time that we had. Um, and I, I really didn't think it was a good transition from our previous to our current provider. So as far as how much time do we actually need? I, I guess anybody could be thrown in the door in a short period of time. But to actually keep, you know, 650 inmates, uh, healthy and continuity of care, I, that's why I was trying to get this, uh, on the agenda and voted on now so that we can continue to bu- provide the best care that we possibly can. As far as the industry standard, I actually did call around and ask other places. Um, some of them didn't have, uh, a clause in there to terminate it. Another one said that really, you know, they've never had it. They usually go to three years and that's it. And I said, wha- wha- what are we doing wrong or differently? They said, because you're actually trying to hold them, you know, uh, accountable on everything. And we expect, expect results for what we're getting, for what we're paying for.
Mr. Rakovich? What is our current status now? Wexford is still there?
Wexford, yes, is still here.
When will, when will they be?
June 24th. June 24th.
June 24th.
They will be gone.
And you, am I right in saying you need three to four months of transition? Is that, is that?
I'm gonna say three months is, in my opinion, still pushing it. Uh, but, yeah, they could, they could get it done in a.
Okay. Uh, if we do not vote on this contract, and we go to June 24th, what's the alternative?
Um, wow. There, there really is no alternative other than saying we don't have any men, uh, any care for the inmates, mental health or uh, medical, dental, eye. We, we wouldn't have anything. We would have to.
So if you had someone who got ill, what would happen?
We would send them to the hospital.
Send them to the hospital.
Did you, did you get any other RFPs besides, uh, WellPath?
We did. Um, CBH, which they, they went through the, uh, the whole process with the evaluation committee. And honestly, I, I don't think that that company would be able to pull it off in three months at this point in time or four months. Uh, I, I guess I could be wrong, but we also weren't as happy with the service we thought we were gonna receive from them.
Yeah, and also, and also, if I, if I could, Mark, that contract with Wexford, I mean, we, we knew that contract, RFP process was coming up. That thing ran out in the end of, uh, it looks like the end of, uh, July. And we waited until, uh, November to get Wexford under the gun and push that contract through for two months. Uh, and you say you were like, you know, kind of jammed up where you didn't have enough time to get them in. where you didn't have enough time to get them in. But you had like six, seven months to do an RFP process to get that done.
And that's how long it actually, that was actually a fairly quick turnaround. We had all the companies in. They had a period to ask all of their questions regarding medication, services, the inmates that we have in-house. So it's not like we actually sat back on that one. We were pushing that forward the entire time. And then once, you know, it was awarded to actually work on the contract and have that completed was done after we actually had the contract in hand at that point.
Yeah, I think if we would have had a little tighter language on that termination clause, I don't think we'd be sitting in the position we're in. But, you know, it's always easy to look back at stuff and say, what if you should have could have? But clearly, we need to make a move. So, I mean, I would like to just take the thing off the agenda totally. And that's what my agenda thing was in the beginning, is because I don't feel comfortable, and I don't know if anybody else feels comfortable trying to vote on something we haven't seen, or anything like that. But I would like to, you know, I would like to just go move forward with making a motion to table this until next meeting.
You're making a motion to table, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second to Mr. Griffith's motion?
A second.
Mr. Urban? Motion to table, no further discussion. We need a roll call.
Mithel? This is a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yeah.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No, I think we could continue on with it. If that's only clause, the termination clause, we could just make that caveat. So I vote no. I think we should help our staff and move forward.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Seven, yes, four, no.
The motion is tabled?
Correct.
Mr. Rakovich, you're going to have to...
Understood.
...what your alternatives are, please. Moving down to number six. Mr. Griffith's making a motion in his ordinance?
It's Sheila.
Yes.
Sheila, question from Mr. Rakovich. Mark, in the other contract, in the prior contract, the predecessor, was aside from their ability to leave at 120 days to terminate, did we have a reciprocal ability to terminate them at 120 days?
We did.
The answer was yes. Everybody hear that? Mr. Griffith, making a motion for number six for the ordinance that you want to introduce?
Yeah, before I get to number six, Mr. McGinley, I just want to let Mark know, Mr. Rakovich know that, you know, if we can get a contract and we can vote on that, and you get something quick, you know, get it out to the council members, and, you know, certainly, I'm sure the chairman had entertained having a meeting to get that done because I know the situation you're in. I don't want to table it without consideration that, you know, you need to have a health provider over there, for sure. So if you could straighten out those issues, that's fine.
Right now, we're a little bit of a limbo situation. But Mr. Rakovich has the ball. Mr. Griffith, you're making the motion for six, please?
Yes, okay. I make a motion that we introduce the ordinance that I sent out to members of council to eliminate the 10% penalty fee on county taxes for 2020 only.
Second, Mr. Chair Haas.
Mr. Haas makes a second to that. On the question? Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Halk?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to number seven, receive and discuss the Annual Controller's Report. Ms. Bednar? Ms. Bednar?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
Jared will put it up on the screen. The Controller's Report was sent out to the council people yesterday. It'll be on the webpage later, if it's not on now. And later, there'll be a video that'll be available on YouTube that Ms. Bednar produced in regards to her report. Ms. Bednar, it's your report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, County Council, County Manager Pedri, and citizens of Luzerne County. I'm Michelle Bednar, the County Controller. Today, I will be presenting the Controller's Annual Report. This presentation will present an annual report to the people of Luzerne County at a council meeting. This will highlight the operations and finances of the Controller's Office for the prior year, identify audits completed, major findings, corrective actions taken by appropriate parties, and significant issues not fully addressed. The Controller's Staff, the Controller's Office Staff is Deputy Controller Mark Majikis, Senior Auditor Wendy Sax, Auditor Nancy DeFlory, Internal Auditor Susan Josiak. Responsibilities of the Controller. Our office is independent, and we oversee county fiscal and management activities, monitor and examine the county government and its operations. We have the authority to conduct fiscal performance, management, contract, grant, compliance, and/or related audits. Who can we audit? All county activities are subject to audit. According to the Home Rule Charter, we have the authority to audit any area that handles county funds. Classifications of audits. There are three types of audits, which are Class 1, statutory audit mandated by the state; Class 2, discretionary audit based on individual priority, which are performed accordingly to availability of our staff; Class 3 is high-priority audit, not known in advance. This requires immediate attention. This takes priority over Class 1 and Class 2. What we do is, main function of the Controller's Office is auditing and compliance of county funds. We do not oversee accounts payable. Under the Home Rule Charter, accounts payable was moved to the Division of Budget and Finance. Without accounts payable in the Controller's Office, we cannot see what payments were approved to be paid out. The Controller's Office Finances. Okay, Controller's Office Finances is our budget? Oh. Okay. I'm sorry, Jared, you were right. I messed that one up. For the, what we look for?
Go back one, Jared.
Yeah. What we look for is, when performing an audit, we look for six categories: fraud, human error, separation of duties, insufficiency of operations and operations, inadequate checks and balances, non-compliance with rules and regulations. Okay, now for the Controller's Office Finances. So our budget for 2019 was $273,180. And annual expenditures were $268,300. Our budget for 2020 was $273,920. The Controller's Office Finances. As shown on the previous slide, the Controller's Office finished the year under budget. Our staff of five employees, including the Controller, continues to maintain adequate continuing professional education credits. This helps maintain a network of resources to allow, to draw upon when faced with a new or challenging audit or situation. This keeps us updated for new methods, helpful tasks, and useful information in highly dynamic areas. The audits are posted online with few exceptions on the Controller's section of the county's website. And that's at luzerne county.org. By law, certain audits such as the DA equitable sharing and the DA asset forfeiture audits are not a matter of public record. Our office works with the U.S. Department of Justice and the Attorney General to follow their guidelines on these audits. Per the Home Rule Charter, all audits must be posted on our website for at least 60 days. However, I choose to keep them posted online and posted on our office bulletin board indefinitely. The audits completed for 2019. All audits that are completed can be found on the Controller's website. For the real estate tax collections audit for 2016, and also for 2017, this is the county portion of all tax payments the county received. On both of these audits, we found a few processing errors. No financial impact. Found no material findings, misstatements, or other non-compliance activities. For the Coroner's Taxology Invoice Review, January 2018 to July 2019, this audit was requested by the Coroner's Office. There was a concern with their invoices where we were very confusing. Amounts were unclear. Controller's Office determined that an overpayment was made for $1,023. Coroner's Office was in agreement. General Hospital issued the refund to the Coroner's Office to correct the error. District Court Magistrate Dixon for 2018, there was a finding, the banking institution cashed a check after 60 days, even though the check clearly stated void after 60 days. This resulted in an over showing on the books. Correction has been made. Plains Township Tax Collector's Interim Compliance Audit for 2017, there was no findings. Edwardsville Tax Collection Compliance Audit for 2017, findings were a lack of checkbook reconciliation, multiple clear errors, lack of detailed deposit slips. We are finding this to be an ongoing issue when doing tax collection audits. But I will offer a solution later on in this presentation. There was no monies found for Edwardsville. Foster Township Tax Collection Interim Compliance Audit for 2017, insufficient tax collection records were kept. There was no missing monies. Valley Aviation 44 Airport Audit for 2014 to 2017, our finding was a lack of checks and balances in verifying fuel flowage. Action was taken. The Controller's Office now independently verifies fuel flowage every six months at the airport. The DA Asset Forfeiture Audit for 2018, there was no findings. This is required annual audit filed with the Attorney General. The DA Equitable Sharing Audit for 2018, there was no findings. This is also a required audit filed with the U.S. Department of Justice. The Real Estate Tax Collection Audit for 2018, the county portion of all tax payments received, there was findings of discrepancy of $112,451 was found. It was due to failure in internal controls allowing the incorrect batch date. No monies were owed to the county. Measures have now been implemented to reject improper dates. There was a missed payment of $1,763 when undetected due to failure in internal controls. The payment has now been received by the county, and measures have been implemented to prevent this as a failure occurrence. The DA Equitable Sharing Audit for 2019, there was no findings. This is also required audit, and this was filed with the Department of Justice. We have the Convention and Visitors Bureau Audit for 2017 to 2018. This audit was done due to change in management. There was a findings of unnecessary spending on cable TV for employees. Personnel policy issue, housekeeping, and valley gratuities are not allowed for reimbursement. Meal gratuities were more than the maximum 15% allowed and received full reimbursement. Personnel policy, lack of overspending on meals. Policy allowances, $45 per day. Action taken was the new department had promptly canceled cable service upon learning about it, and all future reimbursements will reflect with personnel policy. Next, we have the Prison Commensary Audit for 2017. There's no findings with regard to inmate accounts. Immate handbook revisions are needed in the area of commensary purchase limits, telephone call guidelines, and work release structure of payments. One payment made from wrong bank account, restitution payments below required amounts, but much improved from last audit. During the software conversion, there was a lack of communication. Actions, conditions are being addressed, and remedies are being implemented. Then next, we have the $5 vehicle registration fee audit for 2019. This audit was from January 2019 through December of 2019. The findings were fees are presently not earning interest and are not invested. In 2019, $1,132,860 was received as a result of the $5 fee. We estimate over 2020 and 2021, fees totaling around $2.26 million should be earned. This would mean that the county would have the necessary $2 million in order to secure the matching funds for use on the bridge projects. Action, county put in the request to change account to earn interest on 3/23 of 2020. Now, the audits that are in process, we currently are working on. Shikshini Tax Collection for 2016 and 2017, verify compliance after the past tax collector stepped down. Prison Commensary Fund Audit for 2018, verify payments to review inmate accounts. Real Estate Tax Collection Audit for 2019, this will verify proper amounts were collected from taxpayers and submit it to the county. Then we have Slocum Township Tax Collection Audit for 2018. So verify compliance and proper collections and payments. We'll have the Hotel Tax Audit, Wood Springs Suites for 2016 to 2020, to verify accurate payments. And Dupont Tax Collection for 2019, to verify compliance and proper collections and payments. Then we have 2020, proposed audits for 2020. The DA Asset Forfeiture for 2019, this required annually. The Prison Commensary Fund Audit for 2019, to verify payments, review inmate accounts. Probation Services Court Collection Division, investigate payments of court-ordered restitution to victims of crimes. Then we have the Coroner's Office. This will conduct a compliance review in light of multiple staff changes. The County Fuel Review to verify compliance with procedures. Luzerne County Retirement System, review procedures and ensure adequate separation of duties. Then we have the other duties and responsibilities of the Controller. This is Ace Commission Board. That's Accountability Conduct and Ethics Board. Constable Advisory Board. Luzerne County Bid and RFP openings. This is conducted by the Office of Purchasing, which review opening bids and monitor tabulations. Wilkes-Barre Scranton International Airport Board. We do bid openings. We alternate with Lackawanna County, and we attend monthly board meetings. Then we have tax collection notes. There are 76 municipalities in Luzerne County for whom taxes are collected. The County Treasurer's Office collects taxes for four cities and one township. The cities are Hazelton, Nanticoke, Pittston, and Wilkes-Barre, and Newport Township. Around 92% of the revenue received by the county comes from what is billed on tax collection. Due to the manpower constraints, we generally audit tax collectors only when there's a change in tax collector. change in tax collector. Examples would be the stepping down or death of a tax collector, or the election of a newly elected tax collector. We also audit if there is any issue of concern regarding a tax collector. Tax Collection Notes. In addition to auditing tax collectors, we also audit tax collection in its entirety for each complete year. This will uncover if the totals paid to the county differ from those reported to the RBA system. This will direct us to any special tax collector audits that need to be performed. We are often asked if there is a class or teach the basic procedures for collecting taxes, usually when we're doing audits. The main qualifications to become a tax collector are being a registered voter of the municipality, residing there for one year before election, and continuing to reside there during the term of office. They don't have to, don't have to have bookkeeping or accounting skills are not required. The Controller's Office plans to develop classes for the tax collectors. Classes will be offered free to newly elected tax collectors or to any collector who would like to take the class. This is being offered because from doing audits, we've been having questions and some of them seem like they're still not comfortable, so I'd rather open it up to them. So, the classes will be state approved by DCD for continuing education, and if they need credits, we are allowed to give them credits for every 15 minutes that they're in class. The classes will focus on proper procedures and collecting taxes. But at this time, we don't have a start date from everything that's going on. Then we have our CECL hotline, which is, which as always, if anyone has anything to report and wants to keep it confidential, call or email our CECL hotline. This information is located on our Controller's website. And thank you. This concludes our annual report. If you should have any questions, you can email me, michelle.bednar@luzernecounty.org, which can also be found on the Controller's webpage at luzernecounty.org. Once again, all our audits are listed on the Controller's website, except for the DA's audits, which are not public record. Have a good afternoon, wishing all of you and your families to stay safe and healthy during this troubling time. God bless.
Any questions for Controller Bednar?
I have a couple, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead.
Michelle, when you audit the tax collectors, and I know you said that you audit, you only audit them when you, when there's like a change in tax collector. There was a recent change in the, in the tax collector law that says that they cannot have their name on the account or use their social security number. There has to be, the account has to be labeled as tax collector. Are you auditing that to make sure that these people are in compliance with that as well? Because I know there's a, there's a couple that I've looked into that have actually their names on the account.
That is a list that we want to do actually separate because how that hasn't been done to do that, but yes, we have a list that what they have to look for when they're doing an audit. Like, matter of fact, they would have to look for like, if they have a deputy, do they have double signatures on the checks, for the check signings? And then are they, are they bonded correctly? Different things like that, we have a checklist that we do.
Yeah, I mean, we just did, from the last audit, I saw that in 2019, it looks like he did Edwardsville, Foster Township, and Plains. And I was just wondering if we are documenting that those accounts are not in those personal people's names, especially Plains is QK's, I believe. You need to, are we checking to make sure that their names are not on the accounts? It's supposed to say tax collector on the account, and it can't be under their social security number, so I don't know if that's something that the Controller looks at when they go out there to audit that, but if you could just check and see if that's done.
Okay, yeah, that's our list, but good. Thank you.
Okay. Then I have another question. Could you tell me how many calls the CECL line has gotten since 2016 when you were taken in? I don't need to know the content, but has that line been active for you?
Not very active, and majority of the time when we do receive calls, it actually doesn't pertain to us at the county. It might pertain maybe to like a municipality or something like that, so then we would just forward them the call, or, you know, and there's just calls sometimes that people just like to vent, but it's nothing like major that to look into.
Yeah, they usually, yeah, when I was there, it usually was like more of an informational thing. They, they would call and not know who to speak to, and you would guide them somewhere along the line, so I understand it. And that's an important service for the people as well, so I just didn't know if you had a lot of, a lot of calls on it. I didn't get a lot when I was there either, but it just, I know it's, it's an important service that helps people not know where, if they don't know where to go, so that's helpful. Also, I, on the Audit Committee, when we last met, we talked about the Sheriff Real Estate Account.
We're gonna talk about that one a little bit later, Walter, as far as the committee reports, but go ahead.
Okay, so under the Sheriff Real Estate Account, that hasn't been audited back in since June of 2014, and, and there was a lot of serious findings in 2014 with that account. And when I audited in 2012, I believe, we had some concerns as well, because, you know, quite honestly, sheriffs are sheriffs, they're not accountants. And I know we all recognize that, but we still need to make sure that our money's accounted for, so that's, that's a pretty important audit, because it brings in probably about 17 or 18 million dollars at a county that probably needs to be audited. And I don't know if you have, I saw on your list that you just presented, you don't have that listed on that list of things to do for 2020, but it would be very helpful if you could do that for the, you know, to look at that, along with gun permits, you know?
Yes, I think that's a great suggestion. We'll add that to the list. Thank you.
Okay. And then, and then the, one, one other item I have on my list is the Records Improvement Fund. That's an audit that should be done annually, and I know there's a committee that's taking looking at that, and I don't know if that's ever been audited since probably, since we went home rule, I don't believe, but that's an audit that probably should be done annually or semi, or every other year at least. So, that, that account probably should be looked at. There's a lot of money that goes into that improvement account that we need to make sure is being spent appropriately. And that's, that's, that's another issue that I was concerned about. And the last thing that I have is the audit that you just did on the $5 fee. What prompted that audit? Is that just something you just, just decided to do? Because that thing's not that old. I mean, based on the audit, based on the audit report, it looks like it's more of a cheerleading thing for the $5 fee than it is actually an audit.
Well, that was something that, since that was brought up a few different times, we decided to look at that one, and that's what our deputy did.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. McGinley. Thank you.
Anyone else, questions?
Mr. McGinley, Steve Urban here.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Controller Bednar, I was looking at that $5 fee audit and, and a couple suggestions that, you know, that I had made, or even questions that I had actually posed. One was, you know, like when the manager signs off on it, I was thinking, you know, an audit is something that is independent of, obviously, executive management. You know, you do your audit as an independent elected official, and you have your own people and yourself sign off on it on one side. And then, you know, when you present it to a different branch of government, the sign off would be more of an acknowledgement, you know, I think that maybe they should have just like an acknowledgement page stating, yes, I did receive it or I didn't receive it. I don't think it should actually be coupled in with, with your actual audit itself, you know, I mean, because it looks like, you know, all of, you have a signature page of everybody signing off on it, but it looks like, you know, it is part of the audit itself, or that they, they're doing it. So maybe like a separated page saying, hey, I acknowledge that I received it from you, like an acknowledgement page, and then if something requires a response to the findings that your office finds, then they could present, you know, obviously, a separated report back to you, and, and, you know, you, you guys can sign off that you received it, and they can, obviously, can offer the corrections that they've made to those findings. Secondly, you know, when, when we're talking about this $5 fee, you know, there is also a process, you know, nobody's questioning that he spent the money inappropriately as far as what he spent it on, talking about roads versus bridges. We know the money can be used for both. The question that I had was by the process in itself, you know, the council is a separate branch of government, government from county executive and the manager. And there is a process in place to expend funds. You know, obviously, we know that there is an annual capital plan, which covers three years, and that comes to council annually, and they approve it. And just because, you know, if, the, the issue that I have is, is that, you know, Elmwood Road wasn't on any capital plan for the last three years. It was never presented to council, okay? And there is a process by which the manager can spend money. The monies were brought in under an account that was not really identified well within New World. It was also brought in under an account that had zero budget amounts, okay? It was both brought in under a zero budget amount and a zero expenditure amount, and so that's where we take issue. You know, the fee was put in place in May of 2018, everybody knows that. Management had an ample opportunity to put it in the budget for 2019, which they failed to do. Council didn't pick it up, so then it was a zero budget, budgeted item. And so the Charter does state under one of the sections where, you know, if something's not budgeted and it's over $25,000, it's gotta go back to council in a future year. So 2018, you know it's there, the future year is 2019. It's a zero line item. Money's coming in and money's going out. Therefore, it needs, you know, in my opinion, it needs to come back to council for approval, and it never did. And that's where the, you know, the failure, in my opinion, was. And you guys don't address that in your audit. And so, you know, it's the process by which he spent the money, not necessarily that, hey, we spent it on bridges or roads versus bridges. It's, it's the entire process and how the money was spent, where nobody was notified until, you know, after the fact, in a sense, where it was buried in some type of report. Just because it's put in a report doesn't give anybody authorization to spend it if it's not in the budget.
Anyone else with questions?
That's how, that's how we're looking at it, so, or at least how I'm looking at it, and maybe Mr. Griffin may be looking at it.
Okay, well, I did answer in the email to, to you and Mr. Griffin.
Well, we get the fact of the ordinance, but we're talking about the process. By council wasn't notified. It wasn't in the capital plan, it wasn't approved in any one of the previous capital plan. Therefore, it wasn't authorized, you know, if you want to base it on that premise, you know? And like I said, nobody's questioning the fact that it was, was used inappropriately because it was done on a road, which does, you know, the ordinance gives you the, the ability to, to spend it on a road or a bridge, but the money came in under a zero, zero line item at the time. And it went out, the expenses went out under a zero budgeted line item. So when things are zero and you're bringing money in and just going out, there's nobody really checking that, you know, unless it comes to council, and I, I feel council should have been notified at that appropriate time.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bednar, or anyone else, please? Very none, thank you. Moving on, we have the budget reports. Mr. Swetz, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mr. McGinley.
Okay. Pleasure, number eight, receive and discuss monthly budget reports for February 2020?
Sure, so in your packet is the February budget reports. They were sent out this morning. The main issue of contention is the taxes, and that was due to the two-week lag. So the number is very low, because as you well know, the taxes went out two weeks later. Otherwise, the only other real item is the insurance, which was changed to be shown gross. So there's an insurance that gets filled to the agencies and third parties, and then there's the expense where in prior years it was shown net. Besides those two items, a lot of the day-to-day, month-to-month lines are in line as of the end of February.
You want to speak to the penalty money involved?
Sure, I will. The, let me get the line, give me one second, please. The line for the current real estate is on page four, that's the real estate current year amount. That, that money for the current discount period, for the face period, and for the penalty period, all goes to that same line. It's line 400.10, real estate current tax levy. The RBA report that was provided in the packet for 2019 showed a little less than $6 million was received at the penalty time. That was the face amount of the penalty, with almost $600,000 being the 10% penalty received on top of that. That amount was roughly 6% of both the budget and actual amount for 2019.
Okay, questions for Mr. Swetz?
So, so Brian, it's Walter. I just want to know that you're saying it's $600,000 is what we collect in penalty, basically?
The county collect, the 10% was $600,000. We collected $6 million, the 10% was $600,000.
Okay, so what, I'm kind of confused, what's the 6 million?
Sure, so the six, the way the report is shown is it shows the face amount and the penalty amount, so the 6.6 million is the total amount we received. $6 million would have been if it was paid a face, which it was not, and the $600,000 is the 10% penalty for the total of 6.6 million.
Okay.
When we talked yesterday, Mr. Griffin, I think we had a little different number, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that, and that, after I looked at the report, I saw 599,000 on the report, and I, obviously, I deducted the debt, that was the 10% of the 5,900,000, or 5,900,000, so, so, yeah, I appreciate the clarity on that. So, so, so when we eliminate the 10% fee for this year, if, if that ordinance goes through, it's gonna cost the county about $600,000, correct?
Based on 2019, correct.
If I could, if I could, if I could jump in here real quick, too. The other concern that-
Is that Manager Pedron?
Is, is Manager Pedron, I put my camera on, hold on a second. I, but the other concern that, that council needs to be made aware of, and once again, we would support anything we can do to assist our taxpayers, but council needs to be made aware of these things. If you remove the penalty clause altogether, the question is whether or not it in any way incentivizes people to pay their taxes. If, if I get a bill and it says, Dave, you have to pay this bill on April 18th or December 31st, it doesn't matter when you pay it, there's no penalties, there's no issues for any reason, we're gonna pay it on December 31st. The county is going to probably not get any money in for the, for our tax bills for a face period up until December 31st. This may have an issue with tax, with, with, with cash flow. So I've asked Mr. Swetz to review this. I believe this would be, you know, best reviewed after we receive our discount period, which is April 17th, and then we can have a clear determination for council as to what this means for, for cash flow. Once again, I think it's a good idea. I think we should try to help out our taxpayers wherever we possibly can. If this is a way to do it, then this is a way to do it. I'm on board with it. Whether we extend it for a certain timeline or we just eliminate it altogether, that's the only question that I would have, and I want to make sure council's aware that it could potentially hurt cash flow for the months of, obviously, April through December. But we may have a cash flow issues anyway, based upon, based upon where everybody's at right now with this coronavirus. But we're gonna have a full and complete analysis of that for council after the April 17th meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And I, and I really appreciate Dave's input, but I think the taxpayers have a cash flow problem right now as well.
Yeah, no, I'm with you. I think it's a good idea. I just want to make sure you guys are aware of it, that's all. No, anyone else?
Harry Haas, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with what Walter said, too, and we understand a lot of our taxes, probably 30 or 40% or some, I'm sure Mr. Swetz could, could speak to that. Come through escrow, so they will be paid through the mortgage companies and the lenders, and we know the, the big banks are probably gonna do just fine like they normally do in these kind of crises, so I, I think that'll play a factor, too. Thank you.
Interesting that you said that, Mr. Haas, because I just read a report where the big banks are feeling that this is a crunch on them for their mortgages, so it should be interesting to see how this plays out. Thanks. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, I have a question on the budget report for Mr. Swetz. On page 84 of 112, Brian, there's a line item for 599 under Bureau of Elections that shows no mu, no money has been budgeted, yet we have an encumbrance, an encumbrance number 52,59675. Where's that? I, and I know probably the answer's probably gonna be from our 1.4 million, which leads me to my other question, but the 52,5, how, how does, first of all, how does New World allow you to issue a purchase order to encumber numbers without any number budgeted, is my first question for you, if you could answer that?
Why don't I start with explaining the reports, and then I'll get into your questions?
Okay.
So if, if you start with the checking report, or if you look at the treasurer's report, the HAVA account, while a separate bank account, has always been part of the general-
HAVA account, while a separate bank account, has always been part of the general fund since well before I started. So if you look at the treasures report, 100 Fund is the general fund, the HAVA account, the cash and little performance bond, and the payroll account. So all four of those roll up into the general fund. So you could theoretically use money from the HAVA fund, which is in the 100 Fund, which isn't budgeted because it's not coming out of general fund.
Does that, is that, I mean, the HAVA fund is federal money. That should not be in the general fund.
It has been there for years.
Well, that doesn't make it right.
I'm just telling you that it has been part of the 100 Fund since before I started, Mr. Griffith.
Okay. So my, so you're, so again, my question is, how does it allow you to encumber money that isn't budgeted? New World?
The system won't let you actually spend money that's not budgeted, but it will let you encumber money.
Okay. I just, well, okay. So then my next question is the 1.4 million. I've asked this question probably five or six times. So maybe we could find out where that money actually is in the budget somewhere. Because in the 2019 budget, we see that they overspent that line item for machinery greater than $5,000 by quite a few million. I think it was a million dollars. Let me see if I can find my report. But, I mean, it's amazing to me that we could overspend a line item like that in the 2019 budget, and we paid it in March of this year. So I assume that because we had a purchase order for it, that's why we were able to backfill that money in 2019 for the, and that was for the election machines. I get it. But in the 2019 budget, there was no money budgeted. In the report, it shows there's nothing budgeted. At the end of the year, we spent $3 million, let's see, $1,136 of year-to-date transactions in an account that had no money budgeted to it. So, you know, I just don't understand how New World allows you to spend money. And I know this goes back to way back when, when Thurman said about switches in New World. But I don't see how New World will allow you to deduct money from an account that has no money budgeted in it. So we have a year-to-date amount of 1,136,000 in 2019 spent, which is, you know, a million dollars over budget, if you look at the report. So where is that 1,004 that we should have from our bond? And why is that not in a separate account like the 265 Fund?
The 1,004 is part of the borrowing.
Right.
It is in the general fund. It was spent out of the general fund, the 1.3 million as a down payment for the Dominion machines. It was put in as a 2019 PO for the county to receive the 60% state match.
Okay. So that 1.3 million was the one that backfilled that purchase order from 2019, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we had 1.1 million dollars spent on the election machines as a machinery greater than $5,000. Should that not be a capital expense?
It should be a capital expense. It's over 1.1 million. However, at the time the report is, that we don't have a line item for capital expense. That's where they sit in the budget, and those are things that get moved in the audit when we do the fixed asset schedule.
Okay.
So currently, and all the prior years, anything over $5,000 that is capital or non-capital ends up in that line.
So that's where our 1.4 million end up from the bond. It went back into 2019 to backfill that purchase order, correct?
The actual receipt was in November 26, the 1.4 million. So we got the 22 million, the 19.7. So there was 1.4 on the general fund, and then 1.326 was used of that 1.4 million of borrowed money to pay for the down payment for the voting machines.
Should that not have been, should, I mean, procedurally, I'm kind of asking outside of the box here, is procedurally, shouldn't that have been a budget amendment? So we could take that 1.4 million and allocate that budget. So the machinery greater than $5,000 would have had 1.4 million allocated there in the budget. And then when you spend it, it would obviously tick that back to zero. Wouldn't that be the proper way to handle that, rather than, you know, backfill it with a purchase order? Because you issued a purchase order against a line item that had no money in it.
This is a great question for the audit, when the audit comes through in 2019. So I think the auditors are reviewing all these issues now. I think it's a great question for the auditors for when they issue their report in June.
Well, as long as I know the 1.4 million was used for the backfill, and I kind of, I kind of figured that was where it was, but I couldn't find a line item because I know it went into general fund. So that answers my question on the 1.4 million. Thanks, Mr. McGinley. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay. And I think if I remember correctly, Mr. Swetz and Mr. Pedri, we had to issue a purchase order in 2019 in order to be able to get the state match of the 60%. Wasn't that part of the requirement?
That's correct.
Okay. Just for clarification. Any other questions for Mr. Swetz?
Yeah, Steve Urban again.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Swetz, you basically just stated that New World doesn't allow to spend money that isn't budgeted, correct?
Correct. There's not, there's not a, when you've set up an expense, there is not a way to spend money that you don't have.
Okay. I just wanted to, you know, I wanted that clarified because, you know, getting back, you hate to beat the dead horse, but the $5 fee was never budgeted. So how was that spent with a zero budget?
Once again, day-to-day operations for the $5 fee. I think we are all very well aware of your position on the $5 fee, Mr. Urban, as well as everybody's very well aware of my position on the $5 fee. I think we've all tried to get as much information as we possibly can on this out there on the $5 fee. We understand your position that it wasn't budgeted. We understand my position that it doesn't need to be budgeted. This is a great conversation for us to continually have every single meeting. But at this point, you know, we said we're going to spend all the money moving forward on bridges. This is where it's going to be, and it's going to be done next year, so that everybody's well aware of it.
That's not the point, though, Manager Pedri. The point is, is that if something's not budgeted, it shouldn't be spent. In other words, when the budget is done, it's supposed to be locked in, you know? And if something's a capital project, it should be procedurally done the correct way, and council should be apprised of the situation.
And our position has been that it was the correct way, and your position is that it was not the correct way. We are well aware of everybody's positions.
Right. So, you know, and I hope in the audit committee can straighten that out as well.
Okay.
You know, get that question answered going forward.
Moving on to number eight, council committees. I'm just going to go down and ask the people who are chair of the committees to respond for any activity, obviously, with the current health situation. I know there's been some limited activity possibly. So, Mr. Haas, you're first on the list?
Which committee, sir?
The committees that you chair?
Play of Properties Committee, we had to cancel, obviously, because of the COVID-19. So we'll look at two months out. Legislative Committee, I'm just speaking on behalf of the members. The members are concerned that we make sure that the county take advantage of every single federal dollar that will be coming our way as a result of the CARES Act or any future legislation. So we want to be vigilant about that and looking at those opportunities. I know Congressman Muser is having a call-in tomorrow at 1:00 or 1:30. I don't know if the members got that.
Yeah, that came out of regional, I believe.
Very good. So we just want to encourage all the members to keep an eye out. I know it's, the past legislation was at 800 some pages. So, you know, we got to pay the bills. So that's basically it, sir.
Ms. Haas?
Yes. Strategic initiatives has not met, and code review hasn't met. I do have a team set up so that we can meet. But quite frankly, I'm waiting, Mr. Pedri, maybe you could remind Mr. O'Neil. He said that he did have some stuff that he wanted to get to me. He wanted to make some changes to eliminate some redundancies in the, in his division section. But, you know, I haven't set anything up as of now because of the crisis that we're currently dealing with. If we're going on with this, you know, for a longer period of time, I think we're going to set up a team meeting for the code review committee to move forward. Thank you.
I'll reach out to Mr. O'Neil on that.
Thank you.
Mitch, go ahead.
Yes. For the Real Estate Committee, obviously, we did not meet. We were planning on possibly trying to meet the first week of May. We thought probably after the primary. Now with that being pushed back, we'll have to reconsider, you know, what dates. But we will look at the auction properties. I know there were a couple other issues brought up, and I know definitely to work in the future on policy change. That is definitely something I don't want to forget about. But again, with COVID, it will just be unfortunately pushed down the road a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Perry?
Yes. We had two meetings in the first quarter. Obviously, because of the situation, we don't have anything scheduled or anything pressing coming up. So we're going to push everything down a line.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Voe?
Yes. Act 13 hasn't met yet. We were planning to meet mid-April, but we're going to push it back until after we're up and running again.
Thank you. And as far as myself, the audit committee was supposed to meet April 8th. Mr. Swetz was in contact with the auditor. With the situation the way it is with the health crisis, probably April 8th will not come off, but we'll get, set up a different date and see when their availability is. Hopefully, we'll be able to work that out. But everybody's on hold, I think, at this point.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
If I could just ask about the audit progress on what we expect because of the, you know, the stay-in-place orders?
I think I talked to Mr. Swetz this morning. Mr. Swetz, you're still on. They've been sending things that have been requested. But at this point, there's going to be a time when they're going to have to come and do the fieldwork. So that might be the stumbling block. Until we have a little better handle on availability and what's going to be allowed under the stay-in-place order, we'll have to review that as we go along.
Okay.
But they have been communicating and sending reports, et cetera, that have been requested.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley?
Related committees. Mr. Haas, you already talked about Blight of Properties. The Riverfront Park Committee has not met, obviously, and the TIF Committee has not had any communication at all during the time. So that pretty much covers our committees at this point. I asked Manager Pedri if he would give us an update on the current county situation related to the virus. So Manager Pedri, please?
Sure. Obviously, we are continually working with this. I have been awed by the incredible workforce that we have here in the county. Has reached out to us and tried to do some great things in the county. Both county workers, as well as citizens of Loseran County, have stepped up time and time again throughout this process. Obviously, you've seen today that we are now over 200 cases with four deaths here in Loseran County. I do have major concerns regarding that these numbers will continue to go up. I have had numerous conversations with each of our healthcare providers. Each of them have informed me that they do have beds available. They are able to continually take on the numbers. But with these numbers going up, there's obviously a concern across all three providers. That, with that being said, if an individual tests positive for the coronavirus, that individual is 85% of the time told to quarantine at home. So the availability of beds is not that big of an issue at this point. With that being said, with Lucy Morgan at EMA, we've identified numerous locations throughout the county that we could have spillover if we need to. And that's been mostly private industry and private individuals reaching out to us and offering those locations through the goodness of their hearts in order to try to assist the county. On county operations itself, we are still up and running, fully staffed at the correction facility, children and youth, all of our human services. Actually, we're fully staffed almost every location, but many places are working remotely to, in order to keep moving forward. We are still collecting all emergency filings. PFAs are still going on, and those types of hearings. Almost everything else has been moved to the online vehicles now at this point. Also, we are still encouraging people to either go online or mail in. Speaking of mail-in, I would ask all of County Council, anybody watching this video, to consider utilizing a mail-in ballot for the now-June primary for our election. Our numbers have risen exponentially from the mail-in ballots. Before this virus, we had about 700. We've received hundreds in the last, just in the last couple of days. I hope to have a report on that for council as to exactly what number we're at at a later point. So the law finally changed with regard to elections, and we are hoping people take it full advantage of that, so that they utilize a mail-in ballot and don't have to go to the polls come to the June primary. With that being said, we're still business as usual here at the county. We are still open for business. Anybody who wants to go to the Loseran County website in order to, to, before you come to the courthouse, go to the website to see if we're open for your particular need. We are taking a lot of things by appointment at this time. So there is an opportunity to do those things. I'll continue to keep council informed of any involved steps that we have. And I want to thank council for your complete support and assistance, especially on some of our coronavirus task force that we've been able to put in place. We have some good people on these things, and we're going to hopefully get the answers to so many questions that people are asking within the community.
Mr. Pedri, I have a text message from Mr. Morelli. And I think a lot of people in the greater Hazleton area probably have a similar kind of question. They're wondering about if the state is able to help prevent people coming over from some of the metropolitan areas, New Jersey, New York. Obviously, that's a great concern there. And I think, as you indicated, there's been a lot of new cases of the virus.
Sure.
And some of that has been attributed to some of that travel.
Sure. This is something that we've continually are addressing as well. While the Department of Health has not been able to provide us with municipalities of people who do have a positive case, I have requested that information from the Department of Health numerous times, and they have not provided us with that information, yet they, based upon their belief of patient confidentiality. With that being said, with over 200 cases in the county, every single municipality needs to think that the coronavirus is in their particular location and need to act accordingly. Hazleton area, I share Mayor Kasat's concerns that the Hazleton area will be, could be a major outbreak for the coronavirus. Of all the places within the county, and based on a lot of that is the New Jersey, New York connection that you had spoken of. When it comes down to it, obviously, that's Dave Pedri's numbers. That's not Department of Health numbers. That's anything along those lines. That's just my review of the situation. The Lehigh Valley Health Network has been testing people, and they've been doing a great job of getting the tests out as well. So what has Mayor Kasat done? Mayor Kasat has worked with the vans. There are numerous vans that go from Hazleton into Stroudsburg, into Patterson, New Jersey, into New York City. Both Mayor Kasat, as well as the Hazel Township Supervisors, I believe led by Jim Montone, has asked the Pennsylvania State Vans in order to stop running. And all the Pennsylvania State Vans have stopped running that trip that goes from Hazleton area into New York City. I have requested the governor of Pennsylvania. I've requested the governor's office reached out to the governor of New York to see if they can stop the New York-based vans as well. I have heard different levels of success with that. Obviously, March has stopped running those numbers as well. But I understand people from New York, New Jersey are seeking to leave that metropolitan area because of their absolute explosion that they have. But the concern is bringing this information and bringing this virus into Hazleton and overwhelming our healthcare. The Lehigh Valley Healthcare in Hazleton has done a great job. Council actually supported an R cap for them. They expanded their emergency room just not too long ago. They've done a, they have had numerous phone calls. I've been on a bunch of phone calls with the people from Lehigh Valley. They are well-staffed and are facing this virus head-on. But my concerns are the Hazleton area. So Mayor Kasat, Supervisor Montone, was able to ask the private industry to stop the Pennsylvania vans from running into New York. And I requested the governor of Pennsylvania reach out to the governor of New York to stop the New York vans running into Pennsylvania as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Harry Haas. You know, forgive me for not reporting. We, the committees on endangered specific populations that Manager put together, we actually met on the phone yesterday. And Mr. Barber, he's the chairman, so you can expect a full accounting from him. But just to let you know, we move forward, and some big issues, we're pairing up volunteers across the county, identifying true needs, just like you spoke about there. Another thing, speaking with some members of the Latino community, big issue is, I don't know if you can address this, Mr. Chair. They're worrying about if the county can point them in that direction about where to get COVID-19 tests done, because a lot of members of that community go to the emergency room, they don't have healthcare. So it seems like it would be a good idea to kind of nip that in the bud, decrease the population. So it, it seems like it would be a good idea to, to kind of nip that in the bud, decrease the population uh, entering into the emergency room for, um, and have some real testing to do so. So that was a concern, and I wonder if you could address that.
I don't know if either one of us, uh, Mr. Manager Pedri, do you have that information?
Um, I know that, uh, I, I know for, for testing purposes, they should be reaching out to their healthcare providers. Um, I think Lehigh Valley had.
Some of those people are not covered under any healthcare.
Correct, and Lehigh Valley has now set up two testing sites in the Hazleton area in order to address, uh, those things. One's on Fourteenth Street is the second one, um, I believe, today, and all that information they have. And that's been going out both in English and Spanish. Uh, we've been communicating through the Hazleton Integration Project, um, as well as we are doing a, uh, targeted Facebook ad, uh, with the help of Senator Udi Chak's office and the Department of Health, uh, to the Latino community expressly in Hazleton, so that they are receiving the, the, the state, um, information as well on the virus and the, the, the information to stay at home and to, to quarantine. Um, we're going to make sure we can keep getting that information out there where we can.
Yeah, and, uh, many, many thanks to the stand speaker and the two Latino publications in Har- in Hazleton for getting the word out, too, that was brought up in our community meeting, too. And, um, it's nice seeing a lot of the community coming together. But thank you, thanks for that, very helpful. Two testing sites in Hazleton, I got Fourteenth Street. And what, isn't there, um, uh, a, a center on, right there on Broad Street?
Yeah, Sher- the other one's, the other one's on, in Sherman Court, is the other one.
Sherman Court. Thanks, Mr. I'm going to pass that around, too. It's very helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Yes, go ahead.
Quick, uh, Mr. Pedri, the lease agreement for the Flower Tent, is it supposed to start tomorrow? Uh, is there any way that we could, either, do we have to do that by motion to cancel that lease agreement, or have you been in touch with the gentleman for that to find out what he wants to do with his lease agreement?
You know, uh, Walter, I asked Eddie, uh, for the information, but that fell off my radar completely. Uh, so let me, uh, let me try to figure that out, and I'll get back to you on that one.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's a council action. I, obviously, maybe Vito or Ramilda can say whether we need to cancel that lease agreement, or should we reach out to him to see what his, his thoughts are. I'll leave that up to you to follow up on that. And then the last thing is, is there any, uh, plans by yourself to furlough anybody for the county?
Well, this is, sure, um, at this time, uh, those are things that we are looking at, so it is on our radar. Uh, I want to be very clear to every, uh, county worker that's watching this, that isn't um, the po- the plan at this point. Uh, but it is on our radar. I've asked HR to review. We have no plans at this time due to the fact that remote working has been working very well. Uh, however, it is a possibility, uh, that we will continue to monitor. Uh, we will come down to cash flow for the county as well, so this is once again, um, uh, something that I will be briefing council on, probably, um, after the April seventeenth, uh, date, so probably April twentieth, twenty-first. Uh, we'll make it, we'll take it to termination as to the update from council. But it is a possibility. We are reviewing at this point. There are no plans at this point, uh, based upon the fact that our remote workplace has been working out very well.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I hear from people in the county to say, you know, I've been shut out of my job, and I can't work, and I can't collect, and I'm waiting for the stimulus money and, and all those things that go with that whole conversation, so they're kind of concerned that they're, they can't work, but there's people from the county that are working. If they're online working and doing their job, they're certainly not opposed to that. But there are some people probably that don't have online work to do, and I'll leave that up to you to, to address that as you need to. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, uh, this is Leanne.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I, I just wanted to give a huge thank you, obviously, to all the healthcare workers, truck drivers, you know, people working in grocery stores, but also to our correctional officers. And, um, as of now, they do not have any face masks, but I'm actually in contact with someone who may be, uh, may be able to donate them, uh, and I think we'll have enough for every employee, so I'm working on getting a lot of women to sew some face masks, and, um, we may be able to present that to them very soon.
Very good. Well, I'd like to thank the IT Department, you know, especially today's situation, they really uh, put it together very quickly. And I appreciate their efforts so that we can have a productive meeting. Also, a follow-up on what, um, Ms. McDormand just said, I would like to thank all our first responders and the people out there who are continuing to do their necessary jobs in order for everyone else to be able to survive through this, uh, crisis that we're in. And I'd like to say that everyone, please stay safe. Please follow all the guidelines that have been submitted and out there publicly. That's the only way we're going to be able to get through this, and hopefully, come out the other side of a stronger country for all, all of our troubles and tribulations here. With that being said, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Uh, Mr. McGinley first, before you do that.
I can't hear you.
Withdraw.
Go ahead, Harry, I'm sorry.
Withdraw my motion to adjourn. Go ahead, Walter.
Uh, uh, Mr. McGinley, there was a question that was put out to the website regarding funeral directors. Did you get that?
To our website?
Yeah, it was on the, uh, Char- Charlene Kishba sent an, an email regarding the safety of funeral directors. It was sent to the site.
I saw something in the paper, but I didn't know. I did not see it on our website.
Yeah, her, her question, it says from Charlene Kishba. Uh, although I do understand that first responders and emergency care workers are a priority, the fact of this pandemic is unfortunately not everyone can be helped. Funeral directors and coroners are called when someone passes away. We walk into places where people are covered in head, from head to toe, pe- without, with P P Es with minimal supplies. The National Funeral Directors Association is petitioning the funeral, federal and state governments to ensure that the funeral homes are on the priority list for receiving critical supplies. OSHA has listed funeral directors and coroners as a high-risk occupation with more than seventy percent infection rate. All distributors and stockpiles through counties have been redistributed to first responders and healthcare workers, leaving coroners and funeral directors with nothing. In the tragic event that someone passes due to Cro- COVID nineteen, what is the county doing to ensure funeral directors and coroners have the proper P P E that we have always used and now can't get? Question mark. That's probably for Mr. Pedri, I would assume.
Well, for the coroner, uh, Mr. Pedri, there's a coroner.
Uh, everything else, uh, for, for all county employees that have to go out there, our caseworkers, our, our aging caseworkers, um, all that information is out there. Um, I would encourage the funeral director, and I also got that email, Walter, so I'll, I'll reach out there. I would encourage her to.
Is that Mr. Perry or Mr. Snee? I'm not sure. Perry?
Motion to adjourn, Harry Haas.
Very good. All in favor? I thought the second was Mr. Perry.
No, Walter, Walter will make the second.
Walter, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions? None heard. Good luck to everybody. Stay safe.
Stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was clicking out now. Thank you. Good night.